Do our, with the Honorable Minister approve. We have no citizens comment. Are there any protocols, Amy, we need to talk about was expected to raise yellow hand and making sure we?
Yeah, so I, I wanted to briefly go over the format for this evening. And this is intended as a work session on the rural zoning update that we're working on. We have members of the public, we've got six of them, that are in attendance this evening. Mark has put together a PowerPoint presentation. We're going to go through the PowerPoint first, and there are spots where we will stop to take questions from the Board of Supervisors and or the Planning Commission. When we finish that presentation, then we will allow members of the public to speak. And if you use the raise your hand feature, I'll elevate you then to a panelist if you're a member of the public so that you may address the board. The goal of this evening is that hopefully we can, and we've been working on this project for seven plus years now. And the goal is tonight, we're hoping to have come to some consensus on the ordinance and also the zoning map changes. So that we can forward this on to CRPC. And it's a quick turnaround, it has to go over to CRPC tomorrow for their agenda to go out. And then the earliest the Board of Supervisors could hold a public hearing on this matter and take action would be May. We did confirm that with the solicitor today. And there are some additional things we have to do under the MPC, including posting of properties for this ordinance. So tonight, we, we want to go through, we did ask the board if you had any additional questions based on any other things in the ordinance. And we did not receive, I can't talk, receive any responses. But Mark did a really good job of putting together a PowerPoint that walks through the methodology that the Planning Commission and staff used to come up with what we've come up with. So we're going to again, go through that PowerPoint. There are breaks set up in it so we can take questions after sort of each section of it from the board and the Planning Commission. And then at the end, we will get to the members of the general public. And again, members of the general public, if you can just raise your hand, and then I will elevate you so you can speak.
And you need Amy to go ahead and send over the rural. Rural zoning update, the March 18 documented, that's sort of history perspective, but please, anything you want to say?
That was intended as background information for the supervisors so that you know kind of where we were coming from. And I think we're going to touch on a lot of that with Mark's presentation.
So everyone had that, we're in good shape.
Yes, the board and the planning commission have that.
So I guess the procedure then is to get Mark to go through his program. And then at appropriate times, we'll, we'll go through some questions. Supervisors, Plan Commission, and Community Member in that order. So anyone that's from the community that's on will have an opportunity to talk. It's just going to be a procedure that gets us in some kind of a order, otherwise it's chaos. So I said, we had Monday night at the forum, we had chaos. So Mark, you want to kick your presentation off, Nick?
Absolutely. So let me just go ahead and start the presentation here. Hopefully everybody can see this. And yeah, as Amy mentioned, what I'm going to do is I'm going to be going through a few slides at a time. Basically, they're focused on one particular issue at a time. And then when I get to a break where it's a question slide, I will minimize my screen. And that way, Dennis, you'll be able to see everybody that's, that from the Planning Commission, the board. And if you want to have any questions for staff or the Planning Commission, at that point, you can go ahead and do so. So this presentation, as Amy mentioned, is, is pretty much focused on just the major topics that were discussed at the last board meeting. And, and I think at least one other topic that was mentioned that a supervisor wanted more information on. So the goals for tonight's meeting are to provide an overview of our existing and proposed agricultural rights. Provide some information on existing and proposed agriculture related uses. Provide an overview of the rezoning methodology that was used to put this together over the last eight years. Provide some information on the Yocum properties in particular, that was discussed at the last board meeting. And we have more information for you on those properties. And then finally, give a brief overview of the proposed conservation design regulations. Before I go into talking about the first topic, I just wanted to remind the board of the four different zoning districts that are proposed as part of this package. I'm going to be referring to these periodically throughout the presentation. So I just wanted to give you a refresher on what the purposes of these are. And hopefully you have your proposed zoning map that was shared in your last board packet to refer to. So we have our natural areas district that would apply primarily to areas of the township that are comprised of steep slopes and other environmental features. And this is going to largely replace our current forest district. We have the agricultural district that would apply to significantly large farms and large open space tracts that are capable of being farmed. Residential development within that district would be regulated by conservation design regulations. And this district would permit some additional agriculture related uses. The rural residential district would apply to areas that are a mixture of agriculture and large lot residential. And this would permit agricultural uses as well as residential uses consistent with our existing agricultural district. And then finally, the last district that's proposed is rural centers, which would apply to the areas around Linden Hall and Shingle Town. These are very small districts that really just encompass small properties that are already developed. Most of them are under an acre in size. So the first thing I'm going to be talking about tonight is the agricultural rights that exist in the township today. And what if any changes will occur as a result of this proposed ordinance update? So our current township zoning permits agricultural uses on any 10 plus acre parcel in our current rural districts. And it's basically defined as shown here on the screen. And I'm not going to read through all of these, but it's essentially typical farming practices, you know, raising crops. Whether that be vegetables and fruits or trees and shrubs, forestry is included in that. This would also include usual farm structures like barns and greenhouses, as well as a single family home. As well as commercial establishment for processing, storage, and sale of farm products produced and raised on the premises. This list is very common in the center region. It's actually based on a 1977 model ordinance that was created by the Center Regional Planning Agency. And I think this basic definition of farming is used in at least Half Moon Township and College Township. So this map here illustrates where those agricultural uses are allowed today. Again, it's all of our rural districts, which is the agricultural, forest, and rural commercial. And the next slide will show you where agricultural uses would be allowed under the proposed ordinance. So again, the exact same uses that are allowed in those three existing districts would be allowed in these three proposed districts, which comprise the vast majority of the rural areas. The only exception to that are the two white areas around Linden Hall and Shingle Town. Where again, I mentioned, those properties are all roughly an acre or less in size. And they would be in their own district called rural centers. So this next slide just gives you a comparison of the two. The proposed zoning is on the left, or I'm sorry, the existing is on the left, the proposed zoning is on the right. And as you can see, it's pretty much the exact same areas where we permit those uses both today and where they would be permitted in the future based on the, the proposed regulations. So it's important to understand that one of the goals of this update was to try to make sure that our regulations were consistent with state law. And in particular, there's a Pennsylvania right to farm law that we referred to quite a bit. And that Pennsylvania right to farm law has a number of definitions that we have incorporated into the proposed regulations. Another important thing to understand is that the Pennsylvania right to farm law permits any landowner that operates an agricultural operation to sell agricultural commodities from their property so long as 50% of the commodities were produced on site. So I think is a good example would be if you have a property owner who operates a dairy. They can sell milk and cheese and other products that were, you know, made from their, the milk that they, they, they harvest. And they could also sell some agricultural commodities that were not produced on their properties. Perhaps that dairy farmer has a friend who grows sweet corn and they sell some sweet corn from their property where they sell the milk at. That's perfectly fine, as long as 50% of the commodities were sold, that are sold were raised on site. So that's just something I think it's important for the board to understand. This, this is a state law that we can't be more restrictive than, and it protects the rights of farmers throughout the Commonwealth. So how will this proposed rezoning impact agricultural rights? I think the first important thing to point out is that no farming rights are going to be eliminated and no agricultural non-conformities are going to be created. Basically, everyone who is allowed to farm today in our rural areas will continue to be allowed to farm with this proposed update. And we're not going to have any non-conforming farms created as a result of this. In actuality, farming rights would be expanded as a, as a result of this proposed update. In particular, as I mentioned earlier, we allow farming on 10 plus acre parcels. But when the Planning Commission met and discussed this particular issue, they felt that it would be important to allow some horticultural uses. So, so basically raising of plants on properties as small as five acres in size. We would still require 10 acres for any animals to be kept. But if certainly somebody wants to, you know, plant, you know, crops on a five acre parcel, that's something that we would be allowing through this, this proposed ordinance, which is an improvement over what we currently permit. The proposed rezoning also includes a couple agricultural related uses that would be allowed in our agricultural district. And I'm going to be discussing them separately. But I just wanted to point out that that's another way that the, the Planning Commission's proposed ordinance package here would actually result in increasing some rights for our farmers to continue farming. So that gets me to the end of the first part of this. So I will be happy to go ahead and try to answer any questions, comments from the board.
Questions of anyone?
Oh, we've got to raise your hand, hold on, I'll raise my hand.
You don't have to raise your hand, Frank.
Oh, okay, okay. I was gonna, hey, I was trying to follow the rule. Okay, let, let me make, Mark, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying here. Is, is, is if I hear this, and if I hear this correctly, that whatever's permitted in agricultural today is permitted in the rural residential if they have a farming concern going forward. And that would exclude the ag entertainment and ag, whatever the other ag business or whatever the other one was. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's correct. So as I mentioned, the way we define farming uses in our current ag district, that same language is being carried over into the rural residential. You're right, some of these other ag-related uses, they're not ag uses themselves, they're related to agriculture. Farm wineries, ag-related or agricultural retail sales and agretainment would not. But just agriculture itself is going to be permitted throughout all of our rural districts.
Okay, and then so like, for example, if, if you're, you could have, if, if, if what I'm understanding, you could have a riding stable in a rural residential or a riding, whatever, academy, is that true?
Yes, because that's, we, I think we discussed that, and Todd can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we had a discussion with our solicitor about that, if we needed to call that out specifically. Because someone had asked about it at some point. And I think it was kind of interpreted that that is a, a kind of a traditional use for, for a horse farm. So it wasn't something that we needed to specifically identify. So yes, it would be allowed in any of our rural districts.
It would also relate to keeping of draft horses, correct? If, if, even though it's not, not an academy kind of operation.
Sure, you can keep any farm animals are allowed if you have 10 plus acres in any of those districts that we're proposing.
Bud, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think I have just a clarification on this, this chart that we have. I don't know if you can see which one that is, Mark, but lot, minimum, maximum lot coverage. It's permitted uses is anyone or more the following agriculture uses alone or in a combination on a single lot. So you know what, what page I'm on here?
I think so.
Maximum lot coverage 10%. Now, there's an asterisk on that. And it says, it goes from maximum and minimums. But I'm confused on what that means.
If I'm looking at the right page that you're looking at, Bud, because this chart is repeated.
You're on the orange document?
I'm on this orange thing. I know you can't see it, but it's, has to go with agriculture.
It's also not resonating, so I can't, I don't know what made you.
Okay, the question is, right now, if you have minimum size, five acres, you can only have half an acre lot coverage, is that, is that true?
So let me make sure I'm understanding this here.
Okay, minimum?
Yes, yes.
Minimum is five acres.
And, and that, and lot coverage refers to buildings. So you could only have 21,000 some odd square feet of buildings on a five acre parcel.
Yes, that's a half acre.
Right.
Okay, now, now if it goes on up, and then you can have a minimum and maximum, I don't, I had that written down someplace. But it doesn't, it's kind of confusing. If, if you have greenhouses, barns, structures, and dwellings, what size lot do you have to have? Obviously, that's more than five acres, but is it 10 acres or 20 acres or 30 acres or what?
You can have greenhouses on as small as five acres. That's the minimum lot area for agricultural uses that would include raising of plants, which would be done in the greenhouse. So on a five acre parcel, you could have that use. And you're right, it's a 10% maximum lot coverage. We don't have a minimum lot coverage, we just have a maximum lot coverage. And then the asterisk that you're referring to is a maximum impervious limitation. So that would include any pavement or anything that, you know, in addition to buildings.
So you could, if you have to five acres, a half an acre, can, does that include pervious or impervious?
That would only include the buildings. If you have five acres, less than five acres, you're allowed to have up to 40% of it covered with both buildings and impervious surfaces.
Okay.
Five acres or more, it's 20%. And that's at the bottom of the chart, that's what the asterisk is referring to.
Yeah, I, I must have lost that someplace. But I, well, I'm concerned that, that, now, now, if you to go to 20 acres, is, is, is it, is it linear? If you go to 20 acres, is it the same, or is this 25, 25% or 30% or how, does that work?
It's the same whether it's 10 acres or 100 acres. And that is, that is exactly what our ordinance, I think, says today. We didn't make any changes to these lot coverage or impervious coverage standards. We actually just had the impervious standards adopted a couple of years back. And I think there's, you know, if there is an intensive farm operation where they're going to have a lot of, of greenhouses, that's probably understandable if they have a larger lot, that they can have more coverage that way.
Okay, well, I, that helps a little bit. I'll probably have more questions on it later, but go ahead.
You want to get into the agriculture related usage, bud?
Yep, if there's no further questions on this, I'll share my screen again. And we will move on to the next topic. So, let's see here. There we go. So agricultural, or agriculture related uses. So back when the Planning Commission first started looking at all of the township zoning district, this was back in 2012. Both the Planning Commission and staff met with local farmers, tried to get some feedback on how farming is changing throughout the region. And particularly here in Harris Township. Some of the feedback we heard is that, you know, some of the large farmers in the area felt that being able to diversify their operations would be very important to their long-term survival. But the Planning Commission was, I think, somewhat concerned about potential impacts to, to surrounding uses that some of these agriculture related uses could have. So that was the approach that the Planning Commission took, going into looking at allowing for more opportunities for our farmers was to ensure that we would not negatively impact surrounding properties and try to maintain the general character of the area. So what I'm going to walk through next are the proposed agriculture related uses that would be allowed in our agricultural district. One of these, the farm wineries use, is already permitted in the township. And then there's two new ones, agriculture, agricultural retail sales business. Maybe we should change the name of that, because I have a hard time saying it too. And then agretainment enterprises. It's important to note, farm wineries would be, is a primary use, it currently is today. You can just have a farm winery on a property and nothing else. Those other two uses that we've talked about, they need to be an accessory use to an active agricultural operation. So the first thing I'm going to discuss is farm wineries. These were first permitted by the township back in 2011. And it's important to understand that this is a specific use that's defined by the township. This is not a state-defined use. This is something that the township came up with regulations for. And a farm winery does not really meet the definition of an agricultural operation under the state's right to farm law. Our farm wineries ordinance requires two acres of planted fruit that can be used in the production of wine on site. But we don't have any requirements for the percentage of product raised on site. So in other words, you could have a winery producing wine with 90% of the juice that they're using being imported from somewhere else. Based on our proposed rezoning, farm wineries would be limited to the natural areas and agricultural districts. Now, we already have two wineries in the township, one of which would be in both our agricultural and natural areas district. Again, we're not trying to create a non-conformity here. So we wanted to make sure that, that we were consistent in allowing it where we have existing wineries. There were concerns about traffic and other impacts to residential properties if this were to be allowed in the rural residential area, because we do have a lot more residential uses there. And I don't know how many of the board members can recall, but back when farm wineries was discussed, we had a number of members, people from the public show up and make comments about concerns of bus traffic and things to the existing winery that existed in the township at that time. So ultimately, you know, the, the idea here was keep this in locations where we already have these uses. We have, we have one out off of Misty Hill Drive, and then we have the one that's up just north of Linden Hall. And it's also important to understand, though, that a winery, not a farm winery per our ordinance, but just a winery could still be established in our proposed rural residential district as long as half of what is being sold on site was raised on site. We're not outlawing wineries from existing in rural residential. It's just the threshold to sell wine and produce wine on site is a little higher in those residential areas. I don't know how many large wineries could set up in, in that district, because there's not that many large properties. But it was, it's something to point out that this would not outlaw the ability for a winery to be established there. They just would have to have more fruit than what, than what our current ordinance requires in the ag district. So I'm going to stop again to see if anyone has any questions on farm wineries before I move on to the next topic.
The, the likelihood of a winery at two acres producing enough juice to make a saleable product for any period of time is pretty limited. You're not going to get a lot of juice out of, out of two acres. You, you, you need, you're talking about 35 to 40 acres to get something that you can either, either use straight or blend.
I, I don't know that we, I can't remember if we had numbers, but I think when, when we first had that ordinance back in 2011, I think we did get feedback for the majority of juice at the wineries we have is imported.
It's import, yeah. Some, some of the soil is more producing good grape around here, so. Any questions of anybody else from having a glass of wine today? What are you drinking tonight, red or white?
Oh, lord.
A port, okay. Okay, Bud, go ahead.
All right, so, let's see here. Takes my computer a minute to catch up whenever I start sharing again. All right, agricultural retail sales businesses. This use, as we have it defined currently, would permit the sale of agricultural commodities consistent with the Pennsylvania right to farm law and would need to be an accessory use to an existing agricultural operation. The use would be limited to properties with direct frontage and access to an arterial street such as 322 or 45. And would be allowed to, would also be allowed to sell a limited amount of non-agricultural commodities. That was the purpose in really coming up with this definition, was to allow for a limited sale of non-ag commodities on some farm properties where you have a farm operation where they're selling other items. So the proposed rezoning would currently limit this use just to our agricultural district. I think similar to farm wineries, there was a concern that we didn't want to have, you know, a, a, a retail establishment next to a bunch of residential homes and smaller lots. So one thing after looking at this, after our last staff meeting, or last, I'm sorry, board meeting, I said, we, we looked at the definition, and I think we feel it probably needs to be modified a bit to reflect the intent that we're really just looking to have this established as a way for the non-agricultural items to be sold in limited areas. I think when we first started out with putting regulations together for this use, there was maybe a bigger picture in mind where we were going to have specific requirements for any type of farm stand or what have you. But eventually it got whittled down to the point that we realized we weren't going to do that. And we were just going to really regulate the sale of non-ag commodities and only allow it in limited areas. So that's, that's our recommendation of how we maybe can fix this to provide additional clarity to, to, to the ordinance. It's again, important to understand that agricultural operations in our proposed rural residential district will still be allowed to sell agricultural commodities so long as they follow the PA right to farm law. So if we have someone, you know, operating a, a sweet corn stand and they grow that sweet corn on site, they're more than welcome to do so in our rural residential district. They don't, this, this ordinance would not prohibit them, it can't prohibit them from anything that's permitted under state law. So that, this map here shows the properties, and this is just a general map that we tried to put together that we think would be eligible to operate this, the sale of non-agricultural commodities. So these are properties that are more than 10 acres in size in the proposed agricultural district located along an arterial street. And as you note, the, the Red Hatch property, which is the former Drybilly Bisc, farm, I can't recall the name of it. It's in a permanent conservation easement. We are not certain how this ordinance would affect their ability to do that, because there's a separate entity that would perhaps not allow for it. So that is an overview of this agricultural retail sales business. And again, I'm going to stop and see if anyone has any questions.
All right, you, you just confused me. And here's where, here's where my confusion is. You know, you, you've, you've just said, and you stated that we can have this ag retail sales in, in rural residential. And, and if you're a farm, if you're, you're an agricultural use, and you're a farm. But then if I look on your map and I see some rural district, you don't have that in green hatch that says it's eligible for the ag retail business. So I, I, I'm confused. I mean, if, if, if it's going to be allowed, I, I would think that that would, that would have to be in green hatch there to say you're allowed to have ag, ag business. And maybe you need two, one for ag entertainment and one for ag business. But that's, that's where I'm, I'm getting confused, because everything looks good. And then we're actually, it sounds like we're saying two different things in two different areas. Because the way it's written, it's agriculture, retail, sales, and the ag entertainment. The way I read the ordinance is that's only in the ag district. So I, 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 that's where I'm coming up with confusion. How does somebody in the non-ag area that we say can do that, where does that come in? How does that all fit together, Mark?
Sure, what, what I, I apologize if I confused you with this. What it is, is those green hatch properties would be allowed to sell a limited amount of non-agricultural commodities. So any farm anywhere in the township is allowed to sell ag commodities. But those green hatch properties, so think of Tate Farm, they sell shovels and rakes and perhaps candles and a couple of other things that weren't produced at, at a farm. They can do that as long as there's a limited square footage devoted to those non-ag commodities. And that's all this, this agricultural retail sales business was attempting to do.
That makes it, that's, that's better, I understand now. Because I was, the way I was looking at it, you know, we were contradicting ourselves.
Sure.
Sounds good, bud.
Okay, we'll jump back here into the presentation. All right, so the next item I'm going to talk about are agretainment enterprises. And this is definitely something new to the township entirely. You know, there, it's, it's, another term for this is agritourism. And these uses would be considered an accessory use to an active agricultural operation. And agretainment is basically a combination of agriculture with a component of recreation, entertainment, education, and or tourism. So this would include things like hayrides, corn mazes, farm tours and demonstrations. I think some good examples of this in the region would be, you know, Waze Fruit Farm during the, the fall will have, you know, some, some things for kids to do around, you know, hay bales, you know, little tricycle races and things. I know that Harner Farm for a while, and I think Lawson's were also doing a, a corn maze. These are perfect examples of what agretainment enterprises are. And it's something that the Planning Commission felt would be beneficial to allow some farmers in, in the township to do this, as it would provide them with another source of revenue. Most of the time, these agretainment or agritourism uses are. Most of the time, these agritainment or agritourism uses are fee-based. You know, people are showing up and they're going to pay a bit of money to go in and, you know, pick a pumpkin and go do a corn corn maze and and hopefully find their way back out. And uh, in the end, that helps provide some financial support to active farm operations. So in this particular case, uh, the planning commission again felt that it would be important to limit this, these uses to agriculturally zoned properties that have an agricultural operation or at least ten acres in size and have direct frontage and access to an arterial street. They did talk quite a bit about that last item um, to see, because we had some feedback from a property owner that was interested in maybe seeing if we would allow these on other streets. I think the concern was that um, these uses should be limited in where they're allowed and they shouldn't be in in particular impacting residential areas or overly taxing our road system. You know, certainly these types of uses at certain times of the year can can generate a lot of traffic. So out of concern for potential impacts, the planning commission felt that these should be limited to limited areas of the township. They did include a a a number of regulations for these uses as well, just to try to ensure there won't be be any impacts to even surrounding farms. This would include setbacks, um, parking and access, square foot limitations for um, for agritainment structures. I think my my slide says agricultural, but it should say agritainment structures. So just things that are only for agritainment and prohibition of outdoor uh, amplified sound and and a couple of other things as well. So again, the map that I showed earlier applies to this use as well. Uh, basically, any property that's shown with the green hatching would be eligible to have an agritainment enterprise on it. There was, we did talk, as I mentioned, about looking to allow these uses elsewhere, but I think where this is new to the township and there's a concern about potential impacts to to their roads and surrounding properties, the planning commission felt would be important to to start out with a limited approach to these. And then, you know, in the future, if if we want to reevaluate it, we could do so. But this was the uh, the limitation that the board or the planning commission felt comfortable with. So that's my presentation on agritainment. I'd be happy to go ahead and answer any questions.
So Bus Valley Road and the Linden Hall Road, even though they're state highways, aren't in your definition of arterial roads?
They're defined as collector streets by the township ordinance.
Even though they're state highway?
Correct.
Uh, at Mark Frank again, I guess I got lots of questions tonight.
Sure.
Uh, on the ag ag entertainment, the only question I would have on that is the the educational part. You know, uh, if somebody has a farm, ongoing farm, just about any farm's a great school uh, classroom. So I I don't know, is that something that we're limiting that we probably shouldn't be? Or could we get in trouble for not letting kids go to a farm that it's not in the ag district? I guess is the best way to put it, but that's the only thing I'm wondering if we shouldn't have. I don't know what the planning commission, if somebody at planning commission can tell me the logic there or what, but it seems that education to me i- is not entertainment. It's it's actually something that, you know, kids can go to a farm and learn things. That's the only thing, I that's my question. I I'd like to see here somebody's planning commission and the logic there.
I think that's a good question because the Lingo Farm and the Gilan Farm will occasionally have high school students come out that are in the ag studies program at State High. Maybe it's so limited, it's not worth worrying about, but.
They're getting paid for that? Are they getting paid for that, the former?
Oh, I I I don't, I don't know that situation, but paid or not, it's still a good ed- education, I don't think is an entertainment.
I I I agree, but it's not an enterprise.
No.
Maybe it's not worth worrying about it because it happens so minimally.
I I think the concern was that i- if you butted up uh, rural residential to a more residential type district and you had something that could be creating congestion wi- with a larger type of activity. So let's say somebody had uh, I don't know what it would be, but just I think that was, that was the biggest concern about that is that it might cause congestion. Butted up against the residential area if we got into that that situation.
And and both of those roads are used daily by school buses anyhow, so it's really dressed up.
Yeah.
Well, I I think where I would, where I'm coming from on that is is, you know, we're the ones that that at some point, somebody's going to come and say, you know, I want to waiver to to teach a class at my whatever, winery or whatever it is. It's not in the agricultural district. And how comfortable should we feel about saying, yeah, that's okay to do for that one instance? Or, you know, I I just, I'm just not sure that should be in. But that's, that's, that's something we can work out later, but I'm just not sure about education and entertainment together.
Yeah, I'd let me offer that we've talked about this at staff level recently. And one of the, one of the ideas that we discussed was approaching the township solicitor to see if there was a way to limit the hours that educational uh, uses on on farm properties could occur. If we could, if we could limit it legally to typical school hours, I think any concerns we have about uh, things that aren't really educational being termed educational so they can occur on the property would be would be allayed. Uh, so that might be something if if the if the board's interested, that might be something that we can propose to the township solicitor whereby we could then, you know, not include educational uh, activities uh, in the in the same category as what we are currently. And and Frank, I'd also point out in your last comment, these are all amendments to the zoning ordinance. So if somebody comes and asks for a waiver, you can't grant it.
Oh, well, but you know what I'm talking about. Somebody's going to come ask us to do something and that would be, that would be my question.
And and so much education occurs informally anyhow, so it it it's it's tough to put a sum on it and say it is or isn't.
I I think one of the challenges legally of separating out education, and Todd kind of hit on this with the hours of operation and thing. And I think George also with his comment about it being an enterprise. When you're, when you're establishing your farm where you're literally going to be just bringing people in at all times for an educational component, um, you know, offering a hay wagon ride to say it's part of an educational tour, it's kind of hard to separate them sometimes. Whereas if it's something that we could separate it out with with timeframes and it was more occasional, it probably wouldn't be as much of an issue. But this this ordinance was really about trying to let someone have a a permanent operation adjacent and part of their farm that would be, you know, multiple opportunities to to provide different things throughout the year, not just a group of schoolkids coming by every once in a while to see the cows or whatever else.
But most most fully operated farms don't have time to do this regularly. It would be a very sporadic event if it occurred at all, so. May not be worth worrying about, Ken?
Yeah, uh, so, Alice, could you tap both? Could you allow uh, education as an agritainment enterprise, but also maybe have an accessory use with limitations for education only?
I think the challenge would be is how do we define what can take place in that education component? You know, are we limiting the way in which education be provided? And if not, could someone come in and claim they're doing education, but in the end, it's really just an agritainment type use under a different kind of guise? So, you know, we're offering hay wagon rides where you can learn about the farm uh, and and doing a bunch of other things where you can learn about the farm, but in the end, it's the same thing as an agritainment use, but they've just tried to find a way to blend them together.
Well, Mark, Mark, I would, I would think that of an education from my standpoint, what I, and maybe that's why I'm, what I would see is, you know, uh, the local third grade teacher wants to go set up with a farm to have their kids come out and, you know, do whatever, watch them milking or whatever. That's what I would consider education. I'm not, I don't think hayrides and that's, that is entertainment. But I'm thinking that if if a teacher or somebody from the school comes out and says, you know, I want to arrange for my kids to come out and see this or or look at some plants or whatever. But but I would see it have to be connected with a school program is is what I would think education would be.
Yeah.
Mark?
I'm, I'm. Is it Bob has a?
Yeah. If, or or Todd, perhaps i- if uh, somebody in residential, rural residential wanted to do some sort of an event, they could go, they could request a special event uh, from the um, township. They could make a request to do something special.
Well, typically, yeah, typically. Yeah, typically, special events are are really supposed to also abide by what you're allowed to do in the zoning district. Uh, so uh, if if it's permitted use in the zoning district uh, and it's doing, you know, it it's it's requiring some kind of special services or it's selling tickets or it's having outdoor amplified sound or any of the other things that uh, qualify it as a special event, then perhaps, you know, that would, that would occur. But uh, it, I don't think special events are set up such that anybody can do anything uh, anywhere and and call it a special event.
Chris?
Uh, you know, I think I think Frank's uh, common sense and and pretty straightforward examples of what constitute education. And Dennis, you saying twice now that this might not be worth, you know, parsing out um, to me, points it points a way forward here. I think I think this is pretty simple and um, could could go down a rabbit hole quick if we if we want to.
Yeah, yeah. I I I agree with that, Bud?
Just one more thing on agriculture, but going back to lot sizes, the minimum lot requirements. Uh, it looks to me like these minimal lot size protect us against um, hog production, hog farms. Uh, or that that just comes to mon- come to mind, uh, large turkey farms or hog farms. Is it, does that lot coverage protect us against a uh, large hog hog operation?
You're referring to a concentrated animal feed operation, a CAFO?
Oh, okay, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Like Purdue coming in with the, which isn't too bad, but hog farms are especially are bad news. And in New York, Pennsylvania, there's a couple of places where they're putting them in and they can't stop them. But but the desire, does our lot limit, lot build out protect us from that?
I don't know that it entirely protects us. I'm not certain what a typical CAFO, um, as they're typically referred to. I don't know what they, what they uh, normally cover in terms of lot coverage. And I don't know, there's, I think it's actually a use that the state is pretty much adamant that you really can't not allow for because that's agricultural use.
It is agricultural use, but it takes some large, large uh, developments to do that, many acres to develop that. I'm wondering if if this protects us, if you only allowed to go half an acre, if you have five acres or whatever it is, uh, that certainly you're not going to be able to put a large uh, a hog operation on half an acre. You're probably looking at fifteen acres. Now, how, okay, then how how would we be protected from commercial? Uh, the hog farms seem to be the bad, the worst ones I hear about down in New York, places like that. The the odor and the chance of the the spillage into the the uh, the pits being broken and be breached and all this sort of stuff. So do we have protection against that?
I don't, I don't know that we do. I I think that the state made it so that, I'll have to double check because I thought PSAT's put something out like a year or two, maybe more ago, that we're really not allowed to not allow them in our township.
You can't not not allow them.
Yeah, like I I don't think we can zone them out.
You you can, you can regulate them, from my understanding, you can regulate them. You can ensure that they're not going to be, you know, spilling into a nearby stream. You can do those types of things. Um, I think your question though is do our regulations, are they tight enough that no one can come in and it wouldn't be worth it for them to come in and develop because they couldn't?
Certainly not, not at five acres or ten acres, but maybe uh, eighty acres, maybe fifty acres. I know, I'm sure there's all sorts of regulations, stream protection and the whole thing, but it's still kind of a, in Arizona, what I'm hearing about is still kind of a, not a good thing to come in there.
Sure.
So we we don't know whether we have protection or we don't know that we can uh, or commercial, commercial hog grazers are are are, it's necessary and it is, it's allowable. But I'm wondering what can, what is our protection if someone does decide to do that?
Well, I think we, what we need to do is we need to pull the regulations on that through because I said, this was a conversation with through PSATs. I'll reach out to them tomorrow and get that information.
Okay.
I seem to recall the planning commission discussing CAFOs back years ago. We were working on this and basically came to the conclusion that based on what the state had said, we really couldn't do very much. So it was more of a, you know, what we have will hopefully protect us well enough because we really can't do too much else.
Well, there there's, there are probably a lot of federally, federal regulations along with state regulations, I would think. So maybe, maybe we have way of of, if they do come in as way of protecting us, I guess.
Yeah, it's just difficult to regulate them any differently because they are just an agricultural operation. The only difference is it's the scale and who operates them, really.
Maybe Amy can second and then get back to us and uh.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Mark, maybe can.
Yep.
I understood what answer to that one, so. You want to get into the zoning methodology stuff, Mark?
Absolutely.
Is that the next page?
That I believe is the next, the next topic. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. All right, so this next topic, we're jumping away from talking about just residential agricultural uses. And and I'm going to go over a little bit of how the planning commission went through the process of identifying the zoning districts that are being proposed. So um, a couple of years ago, back in twenty-fourteen, the planning commission had started doing what was known as the Designated Rural Areas Project. This was after um, they had done an initial assessment of all the township's districts. They decided we needed to focus on our rural districts and do a study. And the goals of this were to basically analyze our properties and determine how we could protect natural and environmental resources, promote sustainability of the agricultural industry and try to zone similar land uses consistently. So we we currently have some district boundaries that, you know, appear to be somewhat arbitrary. We wanted to make sure as a result of this, we're protecting what the township wants to protect. We're trying to protect the character of the township and lumping similar uh, uses together into the same zoning districts. So to do this, the planning commission um, did a a pretty detailed analysis that included looking at the location of all of the natural features that we have here in the township's rural areas as well as looking at our existing land use patterns. So the findings of our analysis, which these are just two of the maps we had looked at, um, was that ridges and steep slopes, which basically exist in the far northern part of the township and then along our southern border, should be protected from any type of intensive development. Agricultural uses are primarily located outside of our regional growth boundary. Um, and then there were also several areas of the township's rural areas that are, consist of large lot residential development. Uh, and that map there on the on the bottom left shows the location of large lot residential use. So as a result of this analysis, the uh, planning commission recommended that future development in our rural areas should be um, or I'm sorry, in our agricultural areas should result in meaningful preservation of open space that is usable. So that was where the conservation design regulations came in. And they also recommended that the township be, uh, the rural areas be regulated by four different zoning districts. Um, and I went over those earlier in the meeting. The only one that would be a continuation of an existing district was our agricultural district. So that was the uh, the analysis recommendations. And at that point, I'm I'm going to stop again to see if anyone has any questions on just the basic methodology that the planning commission went through to come up with these boundaries and the goals that they had in doing so.
Anyone? I'm seeing anyone, Mark, proceed.
Okay. So. Right? So the next topic that I'm going to give you a little information on is the rural residential district itself. Um, I think this one uh, of the new districts is the one that we have the most questions on. And uh, I wanted to give you a little bit of background on what this district is and what it's intended to do. I'd also like to point out, we're not, we would, if we adopt this ordinance, if you move forward with this and adopt it, it would not be, we wouldn't be the only township in the region that has rural residential, uh, a rural residential district. I believe Ferguson and College Township both have a a rural residential district as well. But the purpose of the district is, is to promote the continuation of our rural character. But also to allow for a mixture of agricultural uses, open space areas and low-density, single-family residential development. Basically to zone similar land uses consistently. And we also are using this district as a buffer from existing more densely developed parts of the township to areas where we have more intensive agricultural uses. So this picture actually here on the uh, on the left is from Laurel. Areas where we have more intensive agricultural uses. So this picture actually here on the uh, on the left is from Laurel Hills. Uh, looking north towards Hunt Ridge Manor. So this is a, an example of the type of kind of land use pattern that we have. Uh, in the proposed rural residential district. So this district includes lands that are pretty much for the most part developed with large lot residential uses. And this includes several open space rural clustering developments. Some areas of this district are located within our regional growth boundary and sewer service area. There's very limited potential for new large scale development in the district because for the most part, most properties have been developed in some, some um, to some degree. Uh, and again, as a result of this uh district being created, we would not result in having any non-conforming uses. All of the uses that would exist in this district. Uh, today would be permitted in the proposed district. Um, so this district permits, the majority of uses currently permitted in our agricultural district. It's almost a, a mirror of the agricultural district with just a few exceptions. Uh, one is farm wineries that we have previously discussed. Uh, another is landscape contractor businesses. This is something that the township added to our zoning ordinance back in two thousand and twelve. Um, and the planning commission didn't feel that landscape contractor businesses belonged in rural residential since it's kind of quasi-commercial in nature. And then the last one is public and private conservation areas. And just to provide a little bit of clarity on that. The township really has no say over whether someone can preserve or conserve their private land. I think. This use is, as the zoning officer and I were talking about it today, is probably more in, in like a Millbrook Marsh type situation where you'd have someone. Putting together a conservation area with, with informational displays and things like that. Again, the majority of this district is already developed, so it didn't seem like there would be a likelihood that someone would want to do this there. Any residential uses that are developed in the rural residential district would need to comply with our existing open space rural clustering requirements. So that is an overview of the proposed rural residential district. And again, I'd be happy to answer your questions if you haven't.
In the case of the land, the landscape contractor business. Because uh. Very cool and the Christmas tree farm. Is uh subcontracting to, to Wheatfield Nursery. Does that fit into that category?
Um.
Wheatfield, Wheatfield is, Wheatfield is growing trees on this property now. Where does that fit?
No, that would just be considered an agricultural use. They're, they're just leasing space for them to, to farm, basically it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
He's giving up Christmas trees and going to hardwoods, so.
Landscape contractor, the best example we have is Green Horizon Landscaping out there across from Hess Field. That's what.
Oh, okay.
Landscape contractor businesses are. And again, the planning commission didn't feel they made a lot of sense next to residential, large lot residential uses.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll address the uh elephant in the room. And that's the conservation areas. Are we really saying that we, we want to get rid of, we aren't going to allow conservation areas in certain districts? My thought was, you know, you say, well, it's pretty well developed. What if somebody comes in, buys up a half a dozen houses, tears them down, wants to put a conservation district in? Is that, we got to tell them no?
Well, when you say put in a conservation district as a private property owner, they can choose to say, we're not going to let our property be developed and we're going to put easement, you know, easements or restrictions.
Yeah, I understand that. I understood that part, Mark. What I'm saying is what, what I'm reading there, what you're telling us is that we're going to restrict them in that rural residential uh district. And, and what happens if somebody wants to put one in like there? I mean, are we going to be facing a lawsuit or, because how do you tell somebody they can't put conservation area in?
I, I think if they're coming in and they're simply conserving the land, we wouldn't tell them they couldn't do that. If they are saying they want to come in and they want to create a conservation area that's going to be open to the public. And have, you know, as I said, informational displays or passive uses on it, that might be a different discussion. I don't think we would be in any type of, of uh. Legal trouble for doing so. Um, because if, if it's not, the purpose of that district is not to have just large open expanses of land. Not allowing that use is, is probably consistent. Now again, anybody can choose to conserve their land if they want. We can't force them to develop it, but. Um, I think it's consistent with the proposed uses there or the, the district.
Frank, I think the difference is if somebody wants to put their, wants to conserve their land, that's one thing. But if somebody wants to come in and establish Shavers Creek Environmental Education Center, that's another thing. And I, I think what we don't want is Shavers Creek Environmental Center in the middle of these um rural residential properties, right? It's fine if somebody wants to, we want to encourage people to conserve their land if they want to, but it's the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center, which is a lovely facility, but not appropriate for a rural residential area or Shavers Creek. So that's what we're talking about. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. It makes, it makes sense, but I, yeah, I just, with the political environment, you know, telling somebody they can't be, you know, have conservative in the language of your ordinance kind of, you know.
Well, I'm wondering if we don't need a better, like I'm taking notes of things that I'm hearing and I'm wondering if maybe the confusion is we need a better definition of this so that doesn't sound like we're telling people they can't conserve their land.
We don't have a definition currently, so any definition would probably be better than what we have.
I mean, maybe saying environmental education center is not permitted there because that would be a more intensive use and that's in keeping with, but you could still conserve your area, conserve your land if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think, I think it comes down to the use of the word enterprise. Is it, is it passive or, or, or aggressive, so to speak?
Yeah.
Let's use the example in Greg Township of the uh. Property in Route forty-five that has a uh private conservation enterprise with the big barn and the swamps. Is it real, that one, Mark?
It's my next door neighbor. It's the swamps in my backyard, so yes.
That, that's a private operation.
Correct.
But it.
I think that one is. They have weddings and other events.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Little else to do with the property other than to put it in a conservation program.
Okay, so I think that's something we need to look into a little further is if there are different ways to say this so that we're not confusing folks and, and Frank's point is well taken.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark. Keep, keep going.
I have a question, I have a question.
Okay, bud.
Um, rural center. Uh, according to our zoning map here, there's, there's only two very small areas are included. One is uh Shingle Town Way. About forty-five. And one is clear over, uh, looks like Brush, is that Brush Valley Road over there? Where is that?
Rock Hill Road.
What's that?
Rock Hill Road downtown Linden Hall.
That's Rock Hill Road right there.
Yep, yep.
A note, okay, those are rural centers.
Yep.
Okay, what, what's, what's, okay, I understand. What about the one out by Shingle Town? What is that little square out in there that, that is a, on forty-five?
Um, I'd have to take and pull up the map here real quick. It's um.
Downtown Shingle Town.
It is?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the area around Shingle Town where it's currently zoned R1.
I goes home right there. I can see your house from here. So that's Shingle Town, okay. And then, then Linden Hall is, is the other one. Those are the two. Those are the only two rural centers we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Linden Hall one is actually a national historic district. With, with tracks of the building, so it is protected through the, through the uh. Through the historic district. It is, is Shingle Town on the National Historic Program?
It is not. Just Linden Hall uh is the only national historic district we have in our rural areas.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not, I'm not sure that means protected. Protected from what?
It's, it's recognition, actually.
It says it's recognition. I understand that. What, what is it protected from?
It, it's, there's no protections from being in a national historic district. It does provide opportunities for grants and things, but it doesn't give any protection.
Okay.
Doesn't have demolition to speak to uh historic structures?
Right, well, that's, yes, that's not from the national side, but that's from the local side. We have demolition delay, correct?
Keep going, Mike.
All right. Okay, so the next uh, let's see here, sorry, it's a little slow. Next topic is the Yocum Properties. And this was what was brought up at the last board meeting. Uh, we, and normally when we're talking about rezoning, we try not to really focus on, on one particular property owner's properties, but in this particular case, there were some questions about it, so we definitely wanted to go through. Um, some of the reasoning as to why this ended up in the proposed rural residential district. So uh, this is a location map that kind of shows where the Yocum property is. It's labeled as Kissel. Because these are, uh, this is a, a map that shows subdivisions in this part of the township um over the last twenty-five, thirty years. And um, that property that is now owned by, or properties, it's now owned by Mr. Yocum. Uh, was subdivided by the previous owner, owner of the Kissels back in two thousand and one. So uh, this just shows the location of where the Kissel property, Yocum property, properties are in relation to other subdivisions in the area. So um, as I mentioned, this, these properties were subdivided back in two thousand and one. Utilizing the township's open space rural clustering regulations. Um, and currently the, the, there's three properties that use Nittany Meadow Farm Lane. Um, that were the original parent tract that were subdivided. Those three parcels uh are, are a little over seventeen acres in size and then. Uh, that's the open space lot. And then there are two residential lots that are about three and five acres in size each. Um, on the original plan from two thousand and one, there's a note that states that uh, the lots in this subdivision may not be further subdivided. The use of the open space lot must also comply with the township's open space rural clustering regulations. And there's also a note that says that the um, the properties need to access Nitt, um, Nittany Meadow Farm Lane, which is a private street. And they are not permitted to have direct access on to three twenty-two. So that's a little overview of how um, these properties came into existence. Back in two thousand and one. So. The uh, the property was added, because this was brought up, I know at the last board meeting, the property was added to the regional growth boundary and sewer service area. In the mid nineteen nineties when Hunt Ridge Manor and Laurel Hills were added to the same boundaries. Uh, the property does contain Spring Creek, uh, wetlands and floodplain areas. There's also um, a significant amount of, of portions of the property that are comprised of slopes of fifteen percent or more. So on these, these properties, the two residential lots are currently vacant. But the open space tract has three residential units as well as some farm structures and uses. Important to note that the residential lots, uh, the two lots there to the east. Could be, uh, they have no formally established use other than they were established as a residential lot and they could be sold and developed with residential uses at any time. Um, certainly if the current or any future property owners wanted to do so. Um, this map here shows a little bit about the land use pattern in and around the uh, the Yocum properties. And hopefully we'll explain a little bit as to why the planning commission chose to include it in the rural residential district. The uh, Yocum properties are outlined in red. Um, it is an open space rural clustering development with large residential lots, which is consistent with what exists to the south of it. And we also have large residential lots in Hunt Ridge Manor to the north. Uh, so we have, you know, Hunt Ridge Manor and Laurel Hills basically north and south of it. It is located within the regional growth boundary. Um, and the existing uses that are on these properties would be permitted in our rural residential district. And I know another thing that was brought up at the last meeting was whether or not the property owner would be allowed to consolidate all of these properties back together into one. Uh, we did speak to our solicitor about that and he said, based on the notes on the plan. Any recombination of these properties would be prohibited since the plan specifically states that the properties cannot be um subdivided and, and combining lots is considered a subdivision. So hopefully uh, this map will give you at least a little bit of an idea as to why. The planning commission recommended that this be uh placed in the rural uh residential district. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that item.
The, the green parcel to the right of the red outline is the stormwater facility for Hunt Ridge?
I will pull that back up here real quick.
Um, yeah.
For everyone to see.
I think that's the one that someone mentioned was.
Sorry, my, my computer is being a little slow here. There we go. So yes, the green.
The green grab there, yeah.
That green blob right here. So that is an open space lot. That is identified on the Hunt Ridge Manor plan and it does include a stormwater facility uh kind of up here in the northwestern corner of it. Uh, the, the majority of this green property, I think, is floodplain and wetlands and, and stream. But it, it is an open space lot. According to the Hunt Ridge Manor plan, it, uh, the open space lots need to be owned by the Hunt Ridge Manor Homeowners Association. And cannot be dedicated to the township. That were, those were some of the notes on the plan. Though that lot can't be basically, uh, it needs to be owned by, by the HOA.
Excuse me, while you're on that map, can you show where the Driveable, Galen Driveable's property is?
It is the, are you talking about the, the farm, the, the large?
The one, the one in his letter.
The, the one in his letter is actually over here to the, let me go back a few slides. You might be able to see it better. It's to the left of Bear Meadows. So I don't know if you can see where my cursor is. But uh, to the left of where Bear Meadows is there at the bottom of the screen. That, that's the property that Mr. Driveable this was referring to.
I thought that was commercial.
No, that is zoned, uh, currently zoned agricultural and um would be in the proposed agricultural district as well.
So that is, oh, that is agricultural now?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would stay, and it would stay agricultural as, as we, as we're proposing. Yes.
The, the Driveable's property actually bridges three twenty-two and forty-five and that's the firm that's in the uh conservation program.
Right, that's the other Driveable this pro, former Driveable this property.
Oh, yeah. I don't believe it belongs to given any longer, so.
Correct. I can go back to this map if that's helpful. I don't know which map is the best.
There, there's no way that, that road leading into the Kissel property could ever be extended to get up into Hunt Ridge, because those individual lots are all sold?
Uh, in Hunt Ridge Manor, I believe that all those individual lots are sold and, and for the most part developed, yes.
And Mr. Hannity pointed out there were four that were not built on, but I'm not sure where they are in that.
I'm not certain either.
Okay.
Oh. Are we discussing this now or what are we doing here? Um?
We're discussing.
We're discussing with the board and the planning commission. We'll discuss then and take public comment at the end of Mark's presentation. So I know, I saw Mr. Yocum has his hand up. We'll get to Mr. Yocum after, kind of want to get through all of this.
We're going to have a public comment about this and then we'll talk about it.
We're going to have the public comment at the end. We're going to talk, I want Mark to go through, we're almost done with Mark's.
Okay, okay, go ahead and do the rest of your program. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Mike, we, we're still asking questions on this though, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, I, I do have a question. Uh, and, and it involves the rural, rural district. Um, can a property in the rural district be in the ag security program?
Yes.
So, so if they're in there, then they, and they're ag security now, they can stay ag security, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
There are certain conditions they can put on the property that would remove them from the ASA program.
I just wanted to see if they were allowed.
We haven't had. And we've had people remove their properties from the ASA, but they haven't changed physically anything on the property to do that. They've just arbitrarily removed them.
And they can also stay.
About thirty, about thirty-two hundred acres ASA.
They can also stay in the clean and green program. We did ask Mark Kellerman that and it goes at the county and it goes by the use of the property, not the zoning of the property. So. As long as that property meets the requirements under the clean and green law, and I don't know them because we don't administer that, they can stay in the clean and green program if the zoning changes to rural residential.
And, and you have to be an ASA to go into a, to a land conservation program.
Is, is Mark, is Mark going to finish this PowerPoint? Is that the idea here?
Yes, we just want to take any, any additional questions on this now, if you guys have anything, you or the planning commission.
Well, we're going to probably discuss that Yocum property now or later. I mean, we went away here, want to hear the, want to hear from the public first and discuss it or what?
We're going to discuss with the public after Mark finishes his presentation. The presentation.
Okay, Mark finished your presentation.
So if anybody else in the planning commission has questions.
Bob, I go ahead and hand up.
Mark, Bob, could you, Mark, could you go back uh to your slide? For uh, two slides earlier, one more.
Which one?
That one, yeah. So if, if you look at that, then looking at the planning commission's rationale uh for this. I think this outlines it pretty clearly that we're looking at some level of symmetry about this. I think this outlines it pretty clearly that we're looking at some level of symmetry about this and consistency. You know, with all the different. Pieces of property that we have there that. I understand why that that would be. Why we did what we did with that. As rural residential because of the Hunt Ridge Manor. The Kissel property, Scott's property would end up being kind of an outlier. If we went the other way. So just as a point of, from the planning commission's logic, we'll be looking at this, I think that was probably. If there's no further questions on that, I will move ahead then and and give the final topic here. Which is our conservation design subdivision regulations. So this is something that I I think we were asked to provide a little more clarity on to the board. I know that. We had provided the board with an overview of this probably back in two thousand and seventeen and periodically since then, but. Obviously, it is a, it's an addition to the ordinance that's a little, you know, it's new and it has new regulations in it. So I'm hoping that this brief part of the presentation will provide additional clarity. So this, these regulations would apply to residential development just in the proposed agricultural district boundaries. It's very similar in nature to our existing open space rural clustering regulations. But it has a couple of things that it does a little differently. It prioritizes the type of land that needs to be protected in the open space areas. And it also gives property owners and developers more development options. Which includes some density bonuses that are provided if. Additional open space and rural resource preservation is achieved. So unlike our current ordinance that just says fifty percent can be developed and the other fifty percent can be saved. This gives you a little more in the way of flexibility. And how the land can be developed, but we also ensure we are protecting the land areas that the planning commission initially set out to protect. In the designated rural areas study. So there's a development process that I'm going to just walk through. That is reflected in the ordinance. The first thing a property owner would want to do is identify. The resources that the ordinance lists that that's on their property. And these conservation resources would need to be shown on a map. There's, there's, there's three different levels. There's level one, level two and level three, and that's based on level of importance is defined in the ordinance. And certain resources must be included in any open space, also known as greenway land, and others are encouraged. So this is a property that was formerly owned by Mr. Rittenhouse, it's since, since been subdivided. But we utilized this and a couple of other properties to kind of model how these regulations could work because we didn't want to. Put together a bunch of regulations and then have them adopted and then test them to see if they're effective. So this was one of the properties that we we used as a test subject. So the next thing after they would identify the resources, they would need to do what's called a yield plan. And this is a fairly simple thing to do. We were able to do this pretty easily as staff. Just taking the property and trying to see how many lots could be created on the property through existing, like through a traditional zoning approach. And that then helps to inform how many lots could be proposed through the conservation design subdivision. So this property in particular doesn't have a lot of constraints. Other than a requirement for riparian buffers on some stream properties. But there's definitely the chance that we could have other properties that have more environmental features that would need to be, you know, kind of avoided. And it might change the results of the yield plan. So once a yield plan is done, this helps the property owner then to determine what type of density they're allowed to have on the property. And then hopefully we'll allow them to pick the appropriate development option for them. So the the conservation design regulations provide several different development options. And those are shown up here on the screen. Now, I will note that the the country lot option, I did not list it because there's no greenway land required for that. And those are ten acre lots. So you could subdivide it into ten acre properties and you don't have to give any open space. But then there's these other options that you can, you have to give additional open space, but you also are permitted to have more. More lots as a result. So overall, the maximum density of any project through conservation design can't exceed one dwelling unit per acre. And that's consistent with our current regulations and it's consistent with the implementation agreement that the township entered into with the other. Five center region municipalities. So here's some examples of again how that property that out there along Misty Hill Drive could have been subdivided using. The conservation design ordinance. So this shows if they had done estate lots, they could be anywhere from three to nine point nine nine acres in size. And would be required to provide forty percent of open space or greenway land. And another example is density neutral. And this is where sixty percent is provided. There's half acre to two point nine nine acre lots. And this, this example, the maximum density is one hundred percent of the yield plan. There are two other options above this that they could provide over a hundred percent of the yield plan, but then there's more open space required. So hopefully that gives you a basic overview of conservation design and how it would work. And with that, I will see if anyone has any, any questions about those regulations.
And supervisors, the planning commission, we'll do one, one round again and then get into the community opportunity itself.
My, I guess a slight question, how would you decide which you would, I mean, you can choose? With those options, any of those options you can choose, what would you decide? How would, what would, what would guide your decision on which way to go on any of those?
I think it comes down to the property owner. They need to determine how many lots they want to get out of their their subdivision and then that will determine. You know, what, what amount of open space they have to give and and they can kind of go forward from there. I think it's very similar to the process today when someone comes in to do a, an open space rural clustering development. They know they have to put fifty percent aside as open space and then they get to try to carve up the rest, but we don't really provide much in the way of. Allowing you to use your imagination to do so. It's just, you know, this, this is trying to promote a little more ingenuity. And and options, but also ensuring that the township's open space being protected is is valuable.
Well, how does this, how does this relate to the Rocky Ridge, which are Rocky Ridge development, which is. From the road back clear to clear route forty-five open space, did they use one of these, one of these options?
No, because this ordinance doesn't exist yet in in the township's regulations. So they, they use the, the open space rural clustering regulations, but they also were permitted to have smaller lots because they're inside of the growth boundary.
Yes.
A little different.
So the, okay. Is this an improvement?
I think it's an improvement.
Okay.
At least in terms of, you know, giving the developers more options and I think it's a big improvement over the type of land we know we're going to get. In the open space, which I think is.
Okay.
It's what the planning commission wants to do.
Yeah, I guess I, my concern, opinion of this thing is that we, our, our. Our land is built out within our growth boundary pretty much. So we want to protect. The, our rural areas outside of our growth boundary or outside of our areas. We want to be able to protect that, but still allow. Something to be done on there under, under certain guidelines. Am I, am I in the right direction here?
Yes, yes.
And and because rather than saying, okay, I guess we can't say that you can't do anything, right? We cannot just say outside of our, our, where's your growth, but you can't do a dang thing. So we're, we're giving them options to do certain things, but it would still keep the rural character of that, of that property.
Correct.
The cost factor, if you look at the first yield plan, you can visualize all the streets and infrastructure that are required to put that together. Versus going to the estate lot, which is basically one road. It ends up being an economic factor of how much do you want to put into. Putting in roads.
Well, I, a good example, I think, would be, which used to be the Lansbury area, which is Franklin Charles. Now, that's, that's wide open and I suspect that's, that is, is prime for development of some sort. And then that's, now we're protecting ourselves on that. We're developing methods that we can keep that rural, but allow them to do something. I'm assuming that's what we're doing here. Right?
Agree with me or not. No, that's, that was the goal of the planning commission with these regulations.
Okay.
If we're finished with supervisor and PC questions, we. Open up to community, Amy.
Yeah.
Whoever's on the community side.
I'm, I'm going to open it up to Scott Yocum first because he's had his hand up. So Scott, I just. Gave you the ability to speak, hopefully. You just have to, yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me? Mark, if you could go back to that map, I wanted to try to finish answering Kent Baker's question. Galen Drablabus also has another two acre lot. That abuts his formal farm and, and part of the Hunt Ridge Manor. Right there, that piece. Kent, that's the piece Galen wrote about that he would like his two acres to stay within ag. And the other comment was the sixty-five acres on the west side of Bear Meadows, which I believe is out of the, the growth boundary, I think.
So and and by our proposal, that little triangular piece, we're proposing that for this rural residential. But the, the other one, we're proposing for ag.
Well, it's currently ag right now. Yes, sir.
And we're proposing it for ag as well. Is that correct?
Well, it's currently in ag. Am I right, Mark?
Yeah, both, both of these properties are currently in ag. The small triangular piece would be rezoned to rural residential if if this moves forward. The other sixty-five acre parcel, which yes, you're correct, Mr. Yocum, it is outside of the growth boundary, would remain in ag.
Okay. Can you point that out, Mark? Yeah, can you? I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
So let me go, well, let me see if I can do this on a different.
Directly across the street.
That, that's a good one. This, this little piece right, right here below the Hunt Ridge Manor property that's triangular shaped. That's in the growth boundary is about two acres in size, is owned by Mr. Drablabus. That would be rezoned rural residential under the current proposal.
And he'd like to keep it agriculture.
That's my understanding from his.
Okay, okay.
That, that was all I had for, for now, Amy.
Okay, I believe Harvey Hanlon has his hand up. Harvey, I'm going to let you unmute and speak.
Amy, you don't hear me, okay?
Yep.
All right, so I, I live in Hunt Ridge Manor. I also representing the homeowners association. And we understand the rezoning of the entire development that has been built on. There are four lots, I believe, that are owned but not built on right now. But the one question we had is what's the reason for rezoning a seventeen point four acre lot? That it butts down to, that is along three twenty-two when you can't, can't build on it? What purpose does rezoning do for that? And especially if you have a situation that a request from Mr. By, Mr. Drablabus of having his state agriculture on their contiguous. Not sure I understand why then the, the need is, I heard somebody talk about symmetry. Symmetry is in the eye of beholder. Those, those properties abut each other and what we're requesting is just leave that seventeen point four acre. Lot is agricultural for, for Hunt Ridge. And and we, we know it's in clean and green and Amy said it doesn't change. Irrespective of that, there's, we just don't understand the reason to change its own. Nobody's going to build on it. I will, I will just say that at least from the point of view of a planner, you typically want to try to keep. An entire development plan in one district if you can. Just for consistency. As well as for the fact that while you are correct, it may not be able to be further developed. I think that's probably the case with several properties in. The proposed rural residential district. It's not going to give any more development rights, nor would leaving it in agriculture will give it any more development rights. Really, for us, it was about trying to have a, a logical nexus between what we, we analyzed and what we were proposing in terms of the new district boundaries. And since it was part of the Hunt Ridge Manor development. And again, we were proposing Mr. Yocum's also be included in the rural residential. It made sense to just be consistent and not spot zone around. You know, leave one thing in and one thing out and it was all part of the same project. Okay, so my final comment would be depending on what the supervisors decide. If the supervisors decide that they don't want to spot zone and therefore they don't want to cherry pick the areas. If, if they also decide that all of those properties on three twenty-two. Should not be in a rural residential, then they're contiguous and it shouldn't make a difference. Just another philosophy, I understand where you're going with the division. And but sometimes you got to think outside the lines a little bit, that's all. I'm done.
Okay, looks like Mr. Rittenhouse is the next person I see with his hand up, so we'll let him speak. Paul, you just have to unmute yourself.
Gotcha. Good evening, all. I have a couple of questions. As I've noted on the way down through the Pennsylvania right to farm law. Is there any reflection in that farm law on solar farming?
No, the Pennsylvania right to farm law strictly is, is related to agricultural commodities. And that's pretty tightly defined and, and generating power is not considered an agricultural commodity.
Okay, I kind of thought that, but because they had signed a contract for something like one hundred and twenty-five megawatts here recently. I thought maybe it might have been include some up. Okay. And on one of the comments. On selling farm product. We make a comment, direct access and access to a main artery. I'm wondering if and should be changed to and slash or, or changed to or. Because if you're like, my property is sits in about four or five, six hundred feet beyond mountain view. When you say direct access, is that access along, for instance, route forty-five, the main road?
So, so that restriction would only be that you couldn't sell non-agricultural commodities. You could still sell agricultural commodities any, on any farm property in the township, no matter what road you're along. So.
It was just technology, you know, technical word, I thought, maybe.
Yeah, I think the planning commission, when they discussed this, you know, trying to say that any feeder road. You know, a local street or collector's street that led to an arterial, some of those are much longer, maybe than, than five or six hundred feet and you could. It could become pretty, you know, it could become more impactful on some of these other road systems if we were to expand it beyond arterial.
Okay. Yeah, that was all, just a couple of little questions. Thank you.
Amy?
Okay, looks like Mr. Emil is up next and then we'll go back around to Mr. Yocum. Mr. Emil, I just gave you ability to speak. You just need to unmute.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for giving me a few moments to speak here. I'm the potential buyer of the Yocum farm. I'm, I'm pretty interested in keeping it in the ag zoning and there are a couple of reasons that I think you, you should probably consider. Doing that and you know, I mean, the township is kind of a civic, historic and environmentally minded township. It was established in eighteen thirty-five, in fact. The Yocum farm is very historic. It's been in this township and in this area even before the township was established. It was established in eighteen sixteen. And as you've mentioned many times, it is in the Pennsylvania Agriculture Security Area Program. Which is, you know, approved by the planning commission and also the supervisors. The farmhouse itself is referenced in your planning and zoning in, in your maps. And it's also listed through that referencing you have in the nineteen eighty-two center region inventory. As a historic place in your township. And you use that multiple places throughout your zoning and ordinances to identify properties that are very historic. That one was, the reference is HT dash twenty-five and it's a J H Keller residence. Additionally, the barn itself is also historic. It was recognized in two thousand and eighteen by the Historic Barn and Farm Foundation of Pennsylvania. And then lastly, I think from an environmental standpoint, this property is very environmentally sensitive. It has the beginning. It it has the beginning waters of Spring Creek, and I think you should strongly consider that. Um, and if you drove down through there today, by any chance, you would see exactly what that means. Um, there's wetlands, and it is also, um, you know, the headwaters for Spring Creek. And and it creates some very distinct ecosystem. Um, so, uh, you know, I would like you to, you know, take that into consideration and not just look at only the the mapping of where this property lies, but also take those three factors into consideration. I think I think it's pretty important that you would you would look at those, and I would ask that you would. And I would also ask, Mark, if you could go back to that one map that you had up there just a moment ago, Mark, that I could um, bring. Yeah, that one right there. Yeah. So the area between where the Hunt Ridge Manor comes down to three twenty two, and then there's an open area there that's being left in ag and then Laurel Hills. Um, is there a reason that particular property, um, wouldn't that fit your spot zoning as well? Because that's not being included. No, the one on the other side of three twenty two, Mark. Yeah, that one right there. That 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 one. And then additionally, if you come over between Laurel Hills and Bear Meadows, there's a white area in there, you know, that area there. So I'm just kind of curious if if we're talking about spot zoning, and if we have these contiguous acres with Hunt Ridge Manor and the old Galen Dravelbis property and the Kissel property, um, why that would really be any different than those two areas I just identified?
This this map doesn't show the locations of the rural residential district. This just shows the locations of the subdivisions in the area. So this white property here next to Bear Meadows, it's just never been subdivided.
Okay, is that gonna stay in ag or is that going?
No, that'll be rural residential, according to.
And what about the one over there that I showed to the right?
This one down here, I think the wasn't included in rural residential as it is, uh, probably twelve or thirteen acres in size. It's outside of the growth boundary. It's not part of a residential development, and there are ag uses in this area as well. So it was just where the break, I think, made kind of common sense to the to the planning to start the new district.
That small piece, Mark, has a home being built on it now. So there'll be three properties on that little, that little piece.
Yeah, actually, the two smaller lots that are in brown are both built upon now. And the and the white area, it it may have a house on it, but it's a larger lot.
So it's 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 smaller, though, than the twenty six acres that is the Yocum property?
I believe it's at least ten acres in size, but I'd have to check.
It's twelve.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Yocum, did you want to say something again?
Yes, a couple of things. I'm not gonna repeat everything Mike said, other than the headwaters of Spring Creek there. Uh, I was ready to sign an agreement with the Crep program, which is a soil and water conservation program. It's a federal program uh, that would prohibit anything on a hundred feet from the middle of that stream. Uh, because of my health and selling the farm, I did not. Uh, so that was a strong consideration as a steward of the Nolan soils and the flood plains out in there. And like I said, being a member of the ag security area, I am requesting that my three parcels, whether we combine them into one or not, Mark, stay agricultural. And we could always re-subdivide is the word I think it's used in as a state regulation. You can do that. But here nor there and keep that all in there that it could never be again. So you'd be talking about approximately currently five parcels totaling forty five point five eight one acres that would remain in agricultural. A lot of times people in ag try to subdivide or change zoning. We're trying to keep this in agricultural uh, and keep it that way. And I understand what you're doing a lot better tonight than I did before. Uh, but still remaining in agricultural, all that would go from the former Dravelbis property farm, the from there to the Elks Club Golf Course. So that would all be contiguous right in there. And I believe, Todd, that piece you were talking about belongs to Gary Ream. I think you're right. That's right around twelve to thirteen acres, which is smaller than the my piece. So. For right now, that's all I have to say. And, uh, you know, that's why I'm requesting it to stay in ag, uh, all the parcels uh, from there. The Hunt Ridge Manor, the Dravelbis piece, and my three pieces staying in agricultural.
We have Mr. Emil again, but before we allow him, why don't we see if anybody else who's a member of the public has any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Emil.
Anyone else? No one else on, Amy?
No, go ahead, Mr. Emil.
Okay. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, okay. I just had a a real quick question. You we had you had talked, Mark, a little bit about the uh, private and public conservation area that uh, was was, you know, you had referenced maybe Shavers Creek or something, Amy. I think that would not be allowed. Um, when I look into new ordinance, there's a sort of a spreadsheet, I guess, if you would, with the permitted uses in the rural residential. And one of those uses is public parks, and it's a it says four acres. Um, what is the difference between that public park that you're allowing than a kind of a public conservation area? I'm I'm a little confused on that. If you could just clear it up, it'd be great.
I think a park is most typically designed in a way that basically promotes active and passive recreational uses on it. Whereas a conservation area is going to probably just be not utilized for anything other than and hopefully protecting whatever's on it. Todd, do you have anything to add to that? Yeah, dude, the the public part of that public park means it would be owned and operated by the township. And typically, uh, the township does not have parks unless there is a subdivision or land development plan approved, and there is a parkland dedication requirement as part of that. Uh, these lots cannot be further subdivided. So in the in the case of, uh, in the case of the three lots currently owned by Yocum, um, a public park, it's not likely one's ever gonna be there.
So so you couldn't do anything. I'm just trying to follow up on that a little bit. So you couldn't do any conservation type activity with, um, you know, an educational activity with regard to using the wetlands for, um, you know, people to come in, um, your because your, you know, your examples you use, you couldn't do the Shavers Creek type activities. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think what we heard tonight was that we didn't want or we don't intend to want the intensive type of use, like a Shaver's Creek is a large environmental.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I wouldn't be interested in that. I'm just curious. Is that so? Is that a forbidden completely? Or is it up for, you know, maybe discussion if you want to do something smaller scale? I I'm just confused.
I mean, I think that's a discussion point for the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. Um, as we have it worded in the ordinance now, we don't want to see, you know, Shavers Creek or Millbrook Marsh come in. Again, both very lovely facilities. Uh, we do want to see the ability for people to conserve the land. And I think some of what you're saying goes back a little bit to the other discussion point that I still have on my list, which was we had some discussion about could we split the ag education uses out from the ag retainment uses? So I I think that's all of discussion points still need to be.
Okay, so, um, and and like historic property tours, things of that nature. So, you know, you have a, you know, a property that's been very historic to the to the area. As I said, it's been noted. Um, and, you know, we we, as we explained to supervise previously, and maybe, Amy, you shared the the letter that Mary Sorensen had had sent you with all the supervisors in the planning commission to talk to my historic preservation work that I've done in both Center and Clinton Counties. Did you share that?
Um, I think that Mary sent it directly to the board. If she didn't, I did not send it to them, but.
Okay, no, I think she sent it maybe just directly to you. Would you would you be willing to share that with the planning commission and supervisors?
Send that tomorrow to them.
Okay.
We got we got the electronic copy of that.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
I I didn't get. I don't know that I got it, so.
I'll resend it. Mark has something to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention like to that question on historic tours. I think and and Todd, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. You know, one of the things to keep in mind, Mr. Em, was that the property that contains those, the the homes, um, which is the seventeen acre open space piece.
Right.
The uses that are allowed on that have to comply with our existing open space rural clustering ordinance. And the uses on that open space piece are fairly limited. I don't think, um, you know, historic tours are included.
Okay.
I know it's it's fairly limited to just basically farm uses and 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 a house is really what you're allowed to have. Now, obviously, there's a few extra homes on that property that I think preexisted when the development happened. But, uh, just keep in mind, there's existing regulations that would further restrict what you could do there.
So so then you couldn't do some retail sales? I thought that was.
If it's related, if it's related to an active farm operation and you're complying with the right to farm law, that's fine, because that's considered agricultural. But you were mentioning like tours of historic buildings and things. I that was where I was just pointing out. I don't think that's allowed in open space parcels.
Okay, and then the winery, um, you had said you're allowed to do a quote farm winery, but you will be allowed to do a a winery of, I wasn't quite sure I understood that completely.
You could do a winery as long as you are producing half of, like, whatever you're using to produce the wine, half of which is being grown on site.
Okay, okay. So that's the same as your retail business?
It's just, yeah, that's the right to farm.
Just falls on it. Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mr. Yocum would like to say something, Danny.
Well, just one last thing, and this was basically to you, Bud Graham. Uh, when you were talking about hogs and turkeys and stuff, agricultural, you have to have a manure plan. So if you did put a big hog operation on ten or fifteen acres, you still have to have a manure plan. So it doesn't mean it won't stink for everybody anywhere. You know, there are some Pennsylvania regulations with manure spreading and stuff. That was just a sidebar.
Yeah, that 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 seems to be the concern in Downey York area, that type of thing.
So we have the same thing.
Thank you for your time, all. I appreciate it.
We have concentrated animal feeding that in Penn in Penns Valley. Uh, a lot of chicken, mass chicken producing down there, the Bell and Evans particularly. Do we have a?
We don't have any. We don't have any other public comment, so.
What? You want to go one more round of supervisor and blank question people?
Well, so I was gonna suggest, um, you know, we we kind of need to come to some kind of a some decision point this evening. And as we mentioned sort of at the beginning of the meeting, uh, the decision point is we we would like to keep this ordinance moving. We know that there are some folks that would like to do some things under the new ordinance who've been waiting for it. Um, so we'd like to keep this moving if possible, if the supervisors are comfortable. I've made a list of the things that I heard that we had some questions on. So if you want, Danny, I can just review that to make sure the list is correct, so we know.
What? Do it, Danny.
Okay, so the first one was the CAFOs, which, thank you, Mr. Yocum, for that additional information about the manure planning. But I will check out through PSATs and with the state law on that tomorrow. Um, I think I heard that there is maybe some desire to see if we could split out the educational uses for the ag education from ag retainment by maybe limiting the hours that they're involved so that they're tied to some kind of a school hours. And we might have to consider how that jives with Penn State University, because I do know they do some, you know, I think they do some ag extension stuff and bringing people out, so we can look into that. And then, uh, we talked about the public and private conservation areas. We need a better definition for that to kind of say that we're not looking, we want people to still conserve the land if they want to. We're just looking to not allow intensive uses in in terms of an environmental education center or conservation.
Talk to Greg Townshend about that one, Amy.
Yes, and then.
Maybe have something on the books.
Okay, and then lastly, um, I wrote this down, and maybe it's just something I heard. But I feel like there's some little bit of confusion between the ag business, which is allowed under the right to farm law, and you can sell, you know, fifty percent is produced on your site. The other fifty percent are ag commodities. And the ag retail sales businesses, which permits the sale of a small amount of non agricultural commodities. And I feel like there's confusion there. Am I wrong on that, or is there confusion there? Do we need a better term for ag retail sales businesses?
I I think your confusion point is correct.
Okay.
Any other positive head shakes up?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have these items that we need to do a little bit more work on. Do you want to, um, discuss? I I think the other hot emerging topic out of all of this, and the reason for this work session was the boundary issue. You want to talk about the boundary issue and try to resolve that tonight? Or knowing that we have these other issues, you want to wait? We can put this on your, um, April agenda and talk about what we found for these answers. Because it seems likely that since we have a little more research to do, uh, we're not going to be able to move this on like we thought we were. Um, because we, you know, we need to be respectful of getting the right information and making sure we have everybody's input.
Clarify the boundary issue, Amy. What what are we looking at?
Right now, we've proposed the zoning map, and that changes, um, a couple of problems, Mr. Yocum's property and the Hunt Ridge Manor piece of property from ag to rural residential. So do you want to have that discussion tonight and try to resolve what you want to do with this? Or do you want to wait? It's up to you.
Will the four things you're gonna do research on affect boundaries or they totally separate?
They they're separate. They won't affect the boundaries. The boundary is a separate issue from those four.
Well, we've been at this two hours.
Are we? Are we looking for final comments here, or what are we doing here now?
Yeah.
I think we gotta get some final comments.
Okay. Me? Who?
Go around.
Bud, you start.
Okay, well, I I will start. Yes, I will. Um, I'm I'm very well satisfied with this. A lot of work was put on it, and a lot of a lot of the description, a lot of these boundaries are going to be are very well. We're going to preserve our areas fairly well. I think we've done a good job on it. And I think we're ready to go, except for the one question that is the elephant in the room is the agriculture area. And and I got to tell you, uh, this is anomaly in township business. Generally, people don't come to the township and ask to be taken out of a growth area. They they don't do it, and we're very fortunate. We have some gentlemen that are willing to do that and ask to put put into or kept in agricultural business. Now, uh, as I sat here and thought about this, when Danny and Nigel and I were on this, we've been on this board, we've lost four or five farms. We had the Homan Farm, uh, which is, uh, which is, uh, K Wood Two. We lost a Rocky Farm, which is now Rocky Ridge. We lost a Harvester Farm, which is Liberty Hill. We have the Hess property out on forty five, which is, uh, which is is a couple of different things out there, and also some Ischl Land, and also part of some Biddle Farms. So we've lost a lot of farmland, but we knew that. We knew that was inside of our growth boundary area. We knew that that was gonna happen, and I got to tell you, they turned out to be great developments. I don't think we can, we have any remorse in 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 losing those farms because they're in our growth boundary. We knew that we're not developed. I think they were developed well because of our of our more or less strict restrictions. But now we have a case where someone that wants to keep a farm, wants to go to a farm. I think that, to me, is is is, uh, is important. And I I certainly agree that that if they want to have the the farmland under the home, I'm still a farm. I'm still a property rights person. And if a person wants to keep his land in farmland, I believe that should happen. And I certainly do support that. I didn't know the little triangle down there with Galen's, but that's fits in. But I certainly would love to see the the, uh, well, I think I think if I can remember back, that may have been before it was Kissel Farm. I don't know whose farm it was. It might have been a Bennett Farm back in the day. But if any anybody that wants to keep farmland, I think certainly deserves recognition, and I think we should do that. Uh, I'm not going to get down to minutia of what can be used, what can't be used, what what are you allowed to do? Were you allowed to pee up against a tree or not? I'm not going to get into that part of it. But I I really feel strongly that if, and this doesn't happen very often, that there's someone comes to town, she says, I want to take my land out of out of development. I want to put in farmland, and I think we should jump at that. Uh, maybe maybe five generations later, five loners later, they want to come back and develop it. We can look at that. But he wants to keep it in farmland. I certainly applaud him for that, and I certainly would vote for that.
Dennis, can I just provide a quick?
My God.
Just one thing, Bud, just so we're clear. This, uh, if we keep it in ag, it wouldn't take it out of the growth boundary, just so you understand that. That's a totally different process.
Well, it is a different process, but it is in ag, and then ag is different than 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 developing it into into houses.
That's true, but I just wanted to clarify that there that it wouldn't be coming out of the growth boundary if.
Probably not.
However, you rezoned it, it's a different process.
Unless we move to change the growth boundary, and I don't think we need to do that.
Well, that's a lengthy process.
Yeah, and I but as far as, so it's just amazing to me that that somebody wants to keep an ag, and that's that's what we love. We're we lose farmlands by the acres, by the thousands. We've lost, but how many then? How many are all those acres that were the the farms that I said were how many acres were there that we've lost? That we've lost, and we knew we were going to develop them. We developed them right. I think it's time to say, okay, someone wants to stay in ag, and it was, and it's not that far from all the rest of the ag property. Let's do it. Let's do it.
I think it's also to clarify, yeah, I think I think it's also important to clarify that changing the zoning district with this ordinance amendment from agricultural to rural residential does not do one thing to change what can be done on.
And leave it in ag.
As far as as far as agricultural is concerned, the reason, the reason we want to change it to rural residential was explained in great detail earlier. It is consistent with with the other properties that we're proposing to put in rural residential. So if you if you decide to take this property out, when it's consistent with the other properties in rural residential, we'll probably have to rethink how we're writing that section of the ordinance entirely again. No property rights are being changed, nobody has to stop farming, the properties can't be developed anyhow. So changing the name of the zoning district does absolutely nothing to anybody's property rights as far as farming is concerned.
So to follow your logic, to follow your logic, it won't hurt to change it to ag.
It already is ag. My logic is you create the potential for a challenge to the ordinance. If you take this property, these three properties that are consistent with Hunt Ridge Manor, Laurel Hills and Rocky Ridge, and you say simply because somebody wants it to stay in a in a particular zoning district, we're not going to be consistent with the ordinance we're trying to adopt, that I think creates a legal challenge for us.
Well, then then I guess we'll find that out, but but I'm telling you, somebody wants to be in ag, they're welcome, I'm voting, I'm voting for it.
Bud, I I understand what you're saying, and.
I'm I'm done talking, let's go to somebody else. I'm done, you're not going to change my mind.
Okay, well, I I just want to say this, I think that you should explore the option of, if you do keep these in ag, and this would be an option we we need to talk to solicitor about, if you keep these in ag, will we be setting ourselves up for a legal challenge? Because we don't want to be setting the township up for a legal challenge from the minute the ordinance is adopted. So I can add that to the list of things to ask the solicitor. And I think maybe that's something that we should do, since, I mean, at least one of you said you want to keep it in ag, but I think we need to hear from everybody else.
I I know I know we're butting heads a little bit here, and I it's it's not a good thing to do. But but I'm I'm telling you, if somebody wants to join, keep his land in ag, that certainly sounds like a reasonable thing to me.
Frank, your turn, Frank.
Okay, all right, I just a couple of quick things. Mark, I want to thank Mark, his presentation cleared up a lot of my questions. It also clarified to me that I'm I'm fairly confident that that the farm that's there now can continue in its use. And whether it's in which ever district. I also, I'm comfortable with the ordinance and everything that's going on there. But at the end of the day, I keep coming back to you, we wanted to maintain agricultural. We've got a historic site, we've got an environmental area, we've got something that Todd has told us can't be developed. We're setting, why, why are we worried about it? Let's just leave it in agricultural. And then I asked the second question, the last thing I'm going to leave you with is, you're saying if we put it in agriculture, we're setting this up for a challenge. Have we thought about the fact that if we move it into rural residential, we're setting ourselves up for a challenge? Because I think there's a few gentlemen on this call tonight that could say, you know what? Let's go, let's go take them to court on it. So I don't, the challenge part, we could get it in either direction. So I'm, my only concern is I want to maintain a farm, and I I I wouldn't have a problem about saying, let's just keep that ag right there. I I wouldn't have a problem with that. That's where I stand.
Nigel. You're muted, Nigel.
Yes, I know, I was mousing to unmute. Yeah, I'm, I I get the discussion and the idea of keeping it in ag. But the explanation about putting the rural residential makes total sense because of the where it's located within the regional growth boundary, the sewer service area. It still can't be developed. So I I think the, I mean, we'll have to get a solicitor's opinion on this. But I think the fact that changing it to rural residential doesn't do anything, you know, negative to the the possible use of the property. But if we actually leave it in agricultural and change what's around it, and that's in the still in the growth boundary is agricultural, there could be a challenge in the other direction that we're spot zoning. And then somebody else that also has a little piece in there, I I just don't understand that that the current owners and buyers, that they just aren't satisfied with the rural residential designation, just because it says that instead of agricultural. And they continue to do what they do, and it's already protected from development because of what's happened in the past. So you definitely need a solicitor's opinion, so we're all on the same page with information. But, you know, that's that's where I'm at on that. As far as the rest of the thing goes, it all makes sense. I really liked the whole concept of the way this was broken down. And, you know, thanks, everybody, for all their work on that. So that's all I have.
You're muted.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I like.
Doesn't work that way, there's no, there's no.
I like, okay, go ahead, Bill.
I like the ordinance as it is written. I think it's a good one. To me, the issue comes down to where do we put the boundaries? Bottom line, where do we put the boundaries?
My thinking is the flexibility of rural residential is what I like. And I think the opportunity to do on the property what's currently outlined is is a selling point for changing it to rural residential. I along with Bud and Frank like the agriculture, and I I recognize all the farms we've lost. But those are in in a different kind of position for building versus this one. So I see no trouble in changing it to rural residential, so. Do we want to do any comments from Plan Commission people? Any PC people want to chime in?
I would have a comment.
Bob is so good.
Yeah, as a relative newcomer, I mean, I'm pretty impressed, there's been a lot of work done on this for coming up on seven years now. And really, I think it's really cool to have this in Harris Township. It's very unique to our region, and I think it's something that would be really beneficial to the region and to Harris Township. I like the way the mapping generally is done. The boundary changes between the natural areas and ag districts. I think there's logic behind that. And I and I absolutely see the logic behind the the boundary definition in this area around the Kissel and Dravelbus properties. So I'm all in favor. I I will say, you know, I'm open to the legal challenge issue being investigated by staff about if we if the township would decide to keep the Kissel and Dravelbus and part of Hunt Ridge Manor in ag. If it's found that, you know, we could do that without some type of a legal challenge from anybody, including Hunt Ridge Manor residents. I'm I'm personally kind of okay with that, if that's if that can be determined, that we can do that. I would say if we did decide to, you know, redo the ag boundary, you know, zigzag it around to include part of Hunt Ridge and the Dravelbus triangle and and the Kissel property that we keep the detention pond in the rural residential district. Reason being is I, and then this goes, this goes back to the Yards property. I always thought there was a huge legal challenge out there with their detention pond being out in ag, you know, servicing that development. And I, you know, eventually the developer won that challenge, and I don't disagree with that. But I, but I do see that as a huge issue. I think the detention pond should stay within the zoning boundary that the development occurs. So I'm open either way.
Okay, George?
I I I see good reason to pass this by the solicitor at this point. And I'm worried about the spot zoning comments that I've heard being made. Especially, you know, once, once, once we make the changes to the rural residential subdivisions that we're we're making, which I which I support very highly. I I just, I have 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 a problem with the swath in the middle being referred to as agricultural. And again, I'll go back to what Nigel was saying, you know. It's, it's almost semantics at this point, except from the legal perspective of, you know, could we have a spot zoning issue?
Okay, we have Bob and Chris and Rich Manning is still on, so Mr. Iger?
I don't have, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, what about Bob?
I I think it would be good to see what the solicitor says. I would be really interested in hearing their opinion on it. I I can see that the idea of making the change, and I hear what Bud and and Frank have said. And I I think they've got some really good valid points with that. So I think it would be, it would be a good discussion, once we hear what the solicitor says.
Is Chris Manning, you're still around?
Yeah, still here. I'm really just, you know, listening to what all you have to say. It's been a great discussion, and I'll reserve my input.
I I think, I think Amy left the call, didn't she?
She did, she had to attend to a family matter.
Okay, so do we have enough, Amy, to proceed, do the legal, do the legal inquiry?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is I will go back to the solicitor and ask about the possibility of a spot zoning or a legal challenge if we were to leave these and change the boundary. I will advise as to what he says. I think we put this on your April 12th board meeting, and we can talk about it again. And and we'll invite members of the Planning Commission to come back that want to come back. And we can also then also nail down some answers to these other questions you had about the ag education, the CAFOs, the conservation areas, and have another discussion. And hopefully, April 12th, we'll be able to come to some kind of consensus. Because we do have, under the MPC, a long haul in terms of getting this adopted. And now, if, you know, things keep getting pushed back, it's likely going to be July until we would consider this for public hearing, so.
Time wise, I'm wondering if we could do our April meeting and then do the Plan Commission meeting as joint meetings to Mondays in a row?
What what do you mean?
Well, if if we do a regular April meeting and and need more time to discuss that, could we not then use the regular Plan Commission meeting Monday?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
We can advertise it as a public meeting and.
For you guys, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I would hope that on the 12th, you'll be able to come to some idea of this. Because it it's going to take this two months to wind through CRPC because it's a big item. So we would like to keep this moving, and we really can't until we've settled the math issue and the boundary issue.
Okay. And your final recommendation on the agenda is that it's a discussion item, so we don't need to take formal action on anything tonight?
No, it sounds like you're not ready to take formal action or to move this forward tonight. Sounds like we have some things we need to hunt down, so we'll.
Okay. Good. Number five on the agenda is adjournment. I would entertain.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion, Dennis. Can I do that? I moved to adjourn.
A very astute of you, Bud.
Okay.
Second.
That doesn't help with everything. Okay, thank you, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.
Good evening. Thanks, Scott and Mike and whoever else is on.